Welcome, everyone. It's time to get started. We're gonna have our... Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna have our student representative from CAMHS help us out with the Pledge of Allegiance. So Kyle?
Please stand and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
I think that's the first time I've ever heard you use the gavel, Madam President.
I felt it was warranted. And actually, all I had to do was raise my hand, and that would've been effective. Who knew?
As long as we're off the record, it's great to hear all those young voices in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's very heartening. Thanks for being here.
That's right.
So, we welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the Board or to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Okay, public hearing. We will start with the charter renewal petition for Clear Passage Educational Center. So I will call up Viviana Trujillo.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Steinhauser, and Executive Leadership Team. My name is Viviana Trujillo. I'm the Executive Director of Clear Passage Educational Center. Thank you for providing the opportunity to share information about CPEC this evening. In addition to my presentation, you will also hear from CPEC's Board Chairperson, Saul Saravia, and our Lead Instructor Jeff Zeiler. Clear Passage Educational Center is a WASC-accredited independent study charter school for students ages 14 to 19, grades 9 through 12. In partnership with local area agencies and schools, Clear Passage Educational Center serves as an alternative education program whose mission is to help students graduate, including students who may have dropped out or are at risk of doing so. We offer a nurturing yet challenging alternate learning environment for teens that may be in need of a high school diploma completion, college guidance, and career preparation services. Focusing on each student's unique strengths and needs, we offer flexible online courses via a blended instructional model that can be completed in CPEC's Learning Center or at home. Our goal is to increase the number of local area students who graduate, attend college, secure career training, and employment. I'd like to share with you a little about the students that we serve. Per California Department of Education guidelines, more than 70% of CPEC's total enrollment is comprised of high-risk groups. Given the high-risk profile of our students, our program model, and the size of our student enrollment, CPEC has received Dashboard Alternative School Status Certification from the California Department of Education. Many new enrollees arrive significantly credit deficient and with a history of severe absenteeism at their previous schools. Some have experienced family trauma that has significantly impacted their educational progress. Others may have dropped out of school because they had to work to support their families, care for siblings, or their own children, help sick relatives, or they may be dealing with prior legal issues. Given the high-risk nature of our student population, the manner in which services are provided is critical to our student's success. CPEC students receive instruction and academic support from highly qualified, site-based, and online subject matter teachers. CPEC's blended instructional model allows for flexible scheduling and increased student access to critical educational resources. Additional key services and resources that we offer include access to computers and technology center, mental health services via approved agencies, and career guidance and counseling. Having launched in the fall of 2015, our program has experienced much success over the past three and a half years. CPEC has completed initial WASC review and received full accreditation in spring of 2018. We've increased our student enrollment. We've received Dashboard Alternative School Status Certification. We've completed our annual fiscal audits. We've implemented standardized literacy assessments via STAR 360, and we strengthened our partnerships with UC and CSU local area universities and community-based organizations. I'd like to share additional information about our accomplishments. Since December 2015, CPEC has experienced steady growth from an original enrollment of 17 students to our current enrollment of 79 students. That represents a 365% increase in overall student enrollment. Another key accomplishment is CPEC's improved attendance. Given a second chance at attaining their academic and post-secondary goals, CPEC's students have responded favorably to our blended learning model and flexible instructional schedule. With a current average attendance rate of 93%, CPEC students are demonstrating a renewed commitment to scholastic achievement. During the 2017-18 school year, CPEC has also launched its Progress Monitoring and Universal Screener Initiative. With a focus on literacy, CPEC uses Renaissance's STAR 360 reading assessment to deliver pre, mid, and post-formative assessments to all students. Of 35 students with pre and mid STAR 360 reading assessment scores, 67% demonstrated measured growth toward college and career readiness expectations. As CPEC's enrollment has increased, student participation and benchmark testing has also increased by 46% plus from September 2016 to February 2019, and the data secured from these measures are used by CPEC's instructional team to provide individualized support to students. As mentioned earlier, students attending CPEC face many challenges, which makes the provision of behavioral health and social services a critical component of our program. CPEC incorporates a three-tiered approach when assessing student needs through the provision of universal, selective, and targeted interventions. Over the last three and a half years, CPEC has significantly expanded its resource pool by establishing relationships with the following community-based agencies and organizations: Centro CHA, El Nido Family Centers, Alta Med Teen Programs, Long Beach Affordable Housing, the Probation Department, Pacific Asian Counseling Services, and the Long Beach Youth Services Network. At CPEC, we are gradually and systemically building a higher education and career exploration culture by supporting students in developing the confidence to pursue their post-secondary aspirations and the resilience to overcome challenges along the way. Through our college partnership program, CPEC has successfully established relationships with educational institutions and businesses over the past three and a half years. Our partners include UCLA, Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Dominguez Hills, Long Beach City College, the Leadership Academy Mentoring Program, and Wells Fargo. Thanks to the efforts of CPEC's Board, Leadership Team, staff, students, parents, and community members, CPEC has been successful in attaining many of its benchmarks and goals over its first three and a half years. We look forward to continuing to serve the students and parents of our community, and we thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Saul.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Board members, for giving us the opportunity to share our success. My name is Saul Saravia, and I serve as the Board Chair for CPEC. And I'm one of the founding Board members and very happy to come back to you and report that we have this accreditation. We're very proud of this. We had a vision that we could establish a program that could serve some of the highest need students in our community, and we're able to realize that primarily because of the excellence of our instructional staff and the administrative leadership of our Director, Ms. Trujillo, who you've met. In particular, you've heard her describe part of our model is about wrapping services around these youth and ensuring that they can focus on their educational achievements despite barriers that they're facing in their lives. I'm currently serving as the LA County Chairperson for the Probation Reform and Implementation Team in LA County. And as you know, one of the target populations for educational attainment, facing many barriers, are youth coming out of our probation camps. And I'm proud to say that our model that Ms. Trujillo described to you provides not just the flexibility for folks who are just getting their second chance of their lives back on track, but also an opportunity for them to get the support that they need in making that transition, which is often missing. I'm also currently serving as an Academic Coordinator for the UCLA Institute for Research on Labor and Education. And part of our work at the university campus is also looking to support and sustain community-based programs, educational programs, that allow everyone in our community, including those people whose life circumstance has made it so that their achievement of their educational goals might not fit into the traditional school schedule, can still have options. So we're very proud of the work that we're doing on the Board. We're very proud of our staff, and we're very grateful to the support that we've had from Long Beach Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff.
Hello. My name is Jeff Zeiler. I'm the Lead Teacher at Clear Passage Education. I have been there since the beginning. This is going on my fourth year. My background is in independent study and community day school. I enjoyed working in these environments, and I find myself appreciating giving these students a second opportunity at education and achieving their goals. When we began, as mentioned previously, we had a handful of students, and now we've built our school up to 79 students currently. With regards to growth, we did go through WASC, and it was an eye-opening experience. It helped us reflect and build our leadership program and to help better support these students. It is enjoyable for me working with students and seeing them excited about post-secondary school and looking towards the future. Working at CPEC, I've seen firsthand, we've gone on field trips and so on and so forth, the impact of exposure to, again, Long Beach Community College, other educational endeavors. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you about this, and I look forward to growing even further in the future.
Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to Resolution 032719-A, Considering Argument for Energy Conservation Services with LBUSD Solar Fund LLC pursuant to Government Code Section 4217-10-18, Making Certain Findings Required for Approval of Energy Conservation Services Agreement. I believe, yes, Mr. Lahey.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Staff, Board Members.
Audience. I'd like to go through and welcome this public hearing for the purchase of a power purchase agreement, which is an agreement for an independent party to provide power to our district at no cost for the installation and a guaranteed price for the power over a 25-year term without any acceleration in those costs. We are currently paying about 22 cents per kilowatt hour to Edison, and the new agreement will be at 14.95 cents. And we have a few sites that have liquefaction in the soil, and those will be at 15.135 cents. We are looking forward to starting this project as soon as possible. The process started over a year ago, and in that process, we had six firms that came in and talked to us. Two firms bid on the project, and we picked MCOR Standard Solar. And the MCOR Standard Solar Agreement is going to be the LBUSD Solar Fund LLC. They formed a partnership for this particular project. Unlike what we've done in the past, we have a master agreement, like we do with the architecture agreements that we have that come to you for facilities, and then we have amendments to those agreements. And so everything is bundled into under one master agreement, which each site being handled separately. We will have the solar projects, a little bit unlike what we had at the high schools that were particular to parking lots, will be parking lots as well as sport fields areas in hard surface areas on the school sites to provide shade at schools where we don't have shade. These schools were legitimately picked the way they were picked because of the needs of the school and the fact that the schools were sized large enough and had the electrical need that a beneficial project could be put in for both the provider and the district. The equipment itself will not be on a lease. It will be on an easement, which means that the provider can come and take care of their equipment, but we don't have that part of our school leased out to a private firm. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain some questions.
Madam President, for the folks in the audience who are going to watch us, I can list the schools for who are the 21 schools. So Lincoln Elementary, Whittier Elementary, Signal Hole Elementary, Hamilton Middle School, Franklin Middle School, Burbank Elementary, Adams Elementary, Edison Elementary, Lindbergh Middle School, Gant Elementary, Hart Elementary, US Grant Elementary, Chavez Elementary, Powell Academy for Success, which is a K-8 school, Roosevelt, Newcombe K-8, Smith, Nelson Academy, which is a middle school, Alvarado Elementary, Cleveland Elementary, and Marshall Academy of the Arts, which is a middle school. So this is a project that we've been looking at, and hopefully we'll do more in the future. But these are 21 that we're very excited and long overdue.
And did you mention the percentage maybe in savings or energy that this will provide for those schools listed?
I did not, but what we're anticipating with an 85% production rate from the provider and some inflation by the utility companies over the course of the 25 years, that is just in the neighborhood of $26 million. That'll be cost avoidance back to the district. In addition to that, we are going to have about 120,000 metric tons of CO that is not going through and being admitted to the air as a result of a fossil fuel power plant. That in and of itself is equivalent to 26,000 cars that would be taken off the road or the planting of 2 million trees. I prefer the 2 million trees. I breathe easier that way, and I think we all do.
Yeah. So it's more than just a cost savings. It's a real savings to the environment.
It certainly is. And once the equipment is in, with the exception of what they call inverters changing the power from AC to DC, if people know anything about electricity, it is really a passive operative system. So nothing really is moving, and it just continues to work and work and work.
Okay, are there any further questions?
I just want to say, Les, I'm really impressed with the fact that you can come up and present all those facts without reading anything. You did a very good job, Les.
Thank you.
Good work, Les.
A few questions, Les. So what happens? How is our relationship with Edison impacted or not with this? How's that gonna work moving forward?
Right now, all utilities, it doesn't matter if they're San Diego Gas and Electric, Edison, or PG&E, are all regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission, and those regulations change year over year. But when we get into the agreements with these companies, it will be the rate structure will change, but what we sign up for is the fact that they're buying power back from us at the price that we would pay. And as we go forward, these things will mitigate. They're gonna always try... The PUC has to allow the utilities to be profitable, to stay in business. So there'll be some things that change along the way, but the benefit right now is to the people that have solar. And you'll see people adding to that as we move forward with batteries to the solar so they can use it in later hours. They've shifted the demand time from 4:00 to 9:00, which is a little bit different. So when you go home, don't do your laundry or your dishes, right, when you go home? And it benefits us during the course of the day for what they call peak demand during the summer months.
And just one technical question, and then I'll allow a Board Member, Felton Williams, to comment or question. So can you talk a little bit less about... So how much power will the solar panels actually generate versus the need at their respective schools and the nuances behind that?
What we try to do is we try to set up the power to be either 80% or 50%. If we have air conditioning at the school, it's 50% of what the need is. If we don't have air conditioning at the school, it's 80%, because when we put the air conditioning in, it will... Thank you. It will drop that back down. We do that specifically because we do not want to be power producers, because it's a whole different rate structure and a lot more criteria. So what we want to do is we want to be power users, and we want to use almost everything that we generate for our needs. Of course, that only works Monday through Friday when school's in, and we still produce on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays.
Les, for those schools that already have solar panels, like Cabrillo High School and some of our other schools, how does that configure into this new agreement, or does it not configure into it?
It does not configure into it. We have three schools out there, Cabrillo, Lakewood, and Millikan, all that have power purchase agreements, and those are standalone. Each one of those schools is a standalone agreement. We also have solar, and nobody ever sees this, at McBride High School on the roof, because that roof is a metal roof, and it's in the flutes of the metal roof itself.
So I see we have a lot of environmental justice folks in the audience. But I'm also curious, too. Can you talk a little bit about any expected challenges in moving forward with the project and implementation, Les?
One of the biggest challenges that we're gonna have, we do have 13 sites that we've preliminarily identified with the possibility of liquefaction. We see that when we do any of the construction out there today. It takes some extra work on footings. After that, we're good. We just have to engineer the footings properly so we can get through the Department of State Architect and put up something that's gonna be safe and live the life of the project.
And we still own... This isn't a lease-leaseback agreement?
No.
Okay.
There's a possibility of a buyout at the end of the project, or the provider, if they just want to walk away and give us the project, they could do that, too. Let's see how benevolent they are at the end.
Great work, Les.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Call for... Oh, all right. Call for Agenda Items for Separate Action Adoption of Agenda.
Still moving, Madam Chair?
Oh, I have...
Actually, before we...
I have a correction.
Oh, Chris interrupting here, huh?
I'm sorry. So on the Personnel Report on page 13, this is listing the abolishments. We have two job developer positions that were listed for abolishment, both at Tucker, the Tucker Site. We received funding on Friday, so those abolishments do not need to go forth. So I respectfully ask that when you vote, it would be with all the other ones, with the exception of those two. And then under new business for the Board, schedule for Board Meetings next year under Workshops, it should say March 17, 18, 2020 and not 2019. Okay? So I respectfully ask that you vote on that, those two changes.
Mr. Superintendent, on the abolishments, I'm gonna read the Personnel Report, and it's showing a certain number.
Yeah, so those two do not need to go forth?
So I need to change that.
You can say... Right. So minus two.
So one still... Okay.
Minus two.
And can you repeat the dates, Superintendent, on the changes for the Board Meeting Schedule?
Yes. Under the Workshop, the last one is March 17, 18. It says 2019.
Oh, got it.
It would be 2020. The body passed.
Okay, so was there a motion?
Move Approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-0. Approval of Minutes?
Move Approval? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-0. Communications? Dr. Williams, do you want to make some introductions?
Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you very much. I want to recognize two individuals who served as dynamic speakers at our recent African-American History Month celebration. I want to call up first Mr. Joseph Rice. Mr. Rice, can you step up to the microphone? We want to present these individuals with Certificates of Appreciation. Mr. Rice, first and foremost, I want to thank you for that wonderful presentation you did on African-American History Month. Based on your life's experiences, particularly as you talked about your experience in the military, as my colleague here, President Diana Craighead, stated, when you mentioned how much thrust it takes to get a plane in the air, and then, once you get that plane in the air, it can ride the airwaves from that point forward, and liken that to the burdens that we carry as individuals, but we just need to get through the initial thrust, all right? I want to thank you very much for that. I have a certificate here for you. I'm gonna read the certificate, and then I'm gonna have you come around and shake our hands. You can go back to the microphone and make any comments that you want to make, but you gotta keep them under five minutes. All right. Mr. Joseph Rice, for your presentation and significant contribution to our 2019 Black History Month celebration, signed by all of our Board members, I want to thank you on behalf of all of our Board members. You just take a moment to come around and... Mr. Rice, we know as you're walking back to the podium, we know that your daughter invited you here, your daughter Joy, who works as a staff member of the district. So any comments you want to make now, Mr. Rice?
First of all, I say I have three daughters.
Oh, okay.
That's my youngest one, this is the next one here. Amen? I would just want to say that since protocol has already been established, and to Dr. Williams and the powers that be, thank you for allowing me and my name to be intruded into your session here this afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to share with you some of my experiences in the military, and particularly in the Air Force. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Now I'd like to ask Deion Taylor to step up to the podium.
Zion.
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 Zion Taylor. Zeon Taylor. Zeon, you did a wonderful portrayal of a very famous person, Miss Catherine Johnson, who was the African-American human computer who meticulously performed the simulation input with a calculator to verify the data that was run on the main computer that resulted in the successful space orbit by astronaut John Glenn. The orbit was deemed critical to the space race between the Russians and the United States. Let me just take a moment to read something and then I'm gonna ask you a favor, okay? For the entire project to succeed, each individual part of the mission, the hardware, the software, and the human, had to function according to plan. A breakdown would be immediate and potentially tragic and broadcast live on television. But Catherine Johnson, like John Glenn, was not prone to panic. Like him, she had already gone through a simulation of the job in front of her. The moment that had arrived, despite the time pressure and the frenzy of surrounding her, felt somehow inevitable. Catherine Johnson's life had always seemed to be guided by a kind of providence, one that was unseen by others and not fully understood by her perhaps, but obeyed by all who knew her, the way one obeys the laws of physics. Catherine organized herself immediately at her desk, growing phone book thick stacks of data sheets a number at a time, blocking out everything except the labyrinth of trajectory equations. Instead of sending her numbers to be checked by the computer, Catherine now worked in reverse, running the same simulation input that the computer received through her calculation, through her calculator, hoping that there would be very good agreement between her answers and the computer. Just as had been the case when she originally ran the numbers for the azimuth angle report. She worked through every minute of what was programmed to be a three-orbit mission, coming up with numbers for eleven different output variables, each computed to eight significant digits. It took a day and a half of watching the tiny digits pile up eye-numbing, disorienting work. At the end of the task, every number on the stack of paper she produced matched the computer's output. The computers matched hers. The pressure might have been buckled a lesser individual, but no one was more up to the task than Catherine Johnson. And my question is, why did you want to use Catherine Johnson as your model?
Because she, even though people were treating her not with respect, she still kept doing her job and she didn't let anything get in her way and that's why I chose her.
Would you do me a favor? Could you repeat that rendition you did for us of Catherine Johnson?
Yes. There is no bathroom. There are no colored bathrooms in this building or any building outside the West Campus, which is half a mile away. Did you know that? I have to walk to Ten Buck Two just to relieve myself and I can't use one of the handy bikes. Picture that, Mister Harrison, my uniform, skirt below my knees, my heels, and a simple string of pearls. Well, I don't own pearls. Laura knows you don't pay colors enough to afford pearls. And I'll work like a dog, day and night, living off of coffee from a pot none of you want to touch. So excuse me if I have to go to the restroom a few times a day. That's the thing I said to my boss when he asked me why it takes so long to go to the restroom.
Catherine is, I'm, Zeon. Zeon, don't sit down. Don't sit down. Don't sit down. Ray, could you give her the microphone again? Is there anything you want to add to what you've already done? Anything you want to say?
No.
My last question for you is what school do you attend?
Brandy Elementary.
Okay. And do you have plans to go on to college or anything of that nature?
Uh, not, yes.
Zeon, again, the presentation you did was from a scene from the movie where she was talking to her coworkers and feeling very frustrated by the treatment she was receiving from all the people that she was working with. And she was the only African-American woman in a room full of males who had a very difficult time of adjusting to her presence. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Zeon, again, Zeon, again, thank you so much for that wonderful job you did.
Thank you.
And I know that her immediate plans include Marshall Middle School. So for the powers that be in this room, right? To the powers that be in this room, Zeon would like to attend Marshall. Just want to put that out there. And we could only follow that up with another group of kids because no adult would like to follow that one. So, um, what?
That, all of this is being recorded on cable TV and will be broadcast on Channels ninety-six, Channel thirty-five, and Channel forty-seven. I was asked to make that announcement.
Okay. And online?
And online.
And online, yes. So now we will have the two thousand and nineteen Grades of Green Waste Campaign. And so I'd like to ask Karen Wassinger? Thank you, I heard that from somebody. And I know we have our Rogers Green Team and our Hughes Airbenders and I remember.
Hi, I'm Danielle Vandervort. I'm a science teacher at Hughes Middle School.
I'm Karen Wassinger, teacher librarian at Keller Middle School and Limburg Middle School.
Maribel Nunez, a science teacher at Keller Middle School.
And I'm Pamela Weinstein, an English and Green Team teacher at Rogers.
Yes, we were here a few months ago, the Rogers and Hughes Teams, and we picked a perfect night to come, it seems. Last, two months ago, we were presenting on our findings on air quality and these kids just wanted more to do. So we wanted to thank you, our superintendent, our executive staff, and our board members. Thank you for having us again. After our presentation last time, Mister Benita said, wouldn't it be great if we had a survey done to find out all the green activities taking place around the district? Well, we did that for you and we are here to present our findings. We'd also like to thank Elisa Calderon, who's here from the City of Long Beach Environmental Services, Kathy Prokopio from the Grades of Green, and Linda Simkins, who's here from Foodfinders. So we have some distinguished guests and we will now let the kids take it away.
Hi, I'm Dia. We are the Airbenders from Hughes Middle School. And you already know, we are in Long Beach. We go to a green ribbon school. We've been recognized for environmental commitment by the City Council of Long Beach. We are a group of students who want to help our environment for the greater good.
Hi, I am Olivia. We are here to ask the Long Beach Unified School District to develop a district-wide waste reduction plan.
Hi, I'm Emma. So what is waste reduction? Waste can be reduced in three different ways. For example, it can be reduced by source reduction. This means to stop waste added source so less waste is discarded. We can also reduce waste by using waste sorting. This means to sort waste into what can be donated, recycled, or composted. Lastly, we can reduce waste by employing guidelines so resources are used to the full extent.
Hi, I'm Grace. Did you know according to the Assembly Bill, three for one, schools that make more than four cubic yards of waste a week are legally required to recycle? And did you know that according to the Assembly Bill, one-eight-two-six, that starting on January first, two thousand and nineteen, schools that make more than four cubic yards of waste must arrange for organic waste recycling? We are concerned that the Long Beach Unified School District is not following these laws, which are in place to protect our environment and us.
According to CalRecycle, the reason behind these laws is to cut down the greenhouse gases that cause global warming. The laws are also designed to find a better way to handle waste than trashing it. Recycling makes waste into something we can use again. Lunch sorting collects unwanted food for donation to hungry people and organic sorting allows compostable things like fruit and vegetable scraps to be composted into fertilizer.
Hi, I'm Scarlett. We have been researching to see if other districts near us have a waste reduction plan so we can see what they do and become like them. We so far have found four school districts, Vedano Beach, Culver City, Manhattan Beach, and Los Angeles. The Vedano Beach School District has done some amazing stuff. For example, they have a green team in lunch sorting stations in every school. They also have district-wide assemblies and surveys aimed to inspire students to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Their district-wide plan has allowed them to reduce their trash by twenty-one percent. The Culver City School District has a district-wide program called Green Five that teaches all students and staff the five Rs, for produce, reuse, recycle, ride, and rethink. This program has allowed them to reduce their trash by fifty percent.
Hi, I'm Kylie Y. Manhattan Beach Unified is another district with a waste reduction plan. In their elementary schools, they have a lunch program that reduces a large percentage of waste and saves them thousands of dollars a year in the process. Of the small amount of waste that the schools do make, most of it is turned into energy instead of getting sent to rot in a landfill. But the question is, how can we as a big district accomplish the goal of reducing waste? It turns out that LEUSD, the second-largest school district in the country, has a full waste reduction plan. Employees are educated on how to reduce waste throughout all of the different parts of their schools. They aim to minimize their amount of waste going in landfills by seventy percent by two thousand and twenty. If they can do it, why not us?
Hi, I'm Kylie D. Individual schools have made efforts toward making their school greener by participating in the Grades of Greens annual trash-free lunch competition and other organizations. There are also a lot of green ribbon schools like Longfell, Los Cerritos, Hughes, Twain, Rogers, Lowell, and Franklin.
We'd like to thank, oh, after all our research, we believe Long Beach Unified Schools District is ready for a district-wide waste reduction plan.
We'd like to thank our sources shown here.
Hello, my name is Lily and I'm introducing the Helen Keller Green Team. At our school, we have two lunch sorting areas to sort, recycle, and compost lunch waste, which has reduced our trash by eighty-two percent. We have saved over two thousand seven hundred and thirty bags of trash from going to the landfill. We have donated over two thousand one hundred and sixty pounds of food to Foodfinders and we have composted one hundred and ten gallons of fruit and veggie scraps. We've learned to use our voices and advocate for meaningful change in our schools.
Hello, my name is Bree and I'm here to talk about the current district policy. Right now, there's no standardized recycling plan in place and schools are on their own to develop waste reduction programs. The district only provides trash cans, dumpsters, and service for trash and also the district provides funds to pay two-point-five hours per week of recycling support only to schools that organize their own recycling plan and only after submitting a request.
Hi, I'm Jordan. I'm here to introduce you to Foodfinders. They collect unopened, uneaten food donated by students during mealtimes. They keep good food out of the trash and reduce our waste. Donations make room for actual trash and save us on tipping costs. It also reduces food instability by giving food to people who need it.
Hi, my name is Jayla and we have made a huge impact on the environment. We have prevented one hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine pounds of food waste in the past year. And that's with only twenty-two schools donating on a regular, weekly basis. That prevented one hundred and forty-four thousand, two thousand, two hundred and sixty kilograms of greenhouse gases from polluting our environment, which would equal to thirty-five years of energy consumption for a three-person household.
Hi, my name is Alina and I'm gonna be talking about what the city of Long Beach provides for free. They provide purple recycling carts or metal recycling bins and services. They also provide backyard compost and classroom vermi composting bins. They provide a school walkthrough to help school identify opportunities to improve recycling, clean-up in the box and schoolyard cleanups, and assemblies focused on waste reduction and recycling for grades K to five.
Hi, I'm Felicity.
And I'm Bree.
And here is a proposal on what we can do.
First, we can create a systematic recycling and sustainability plan for the whole district. Schools right now have put in place plans that reduce their waste by eighty percent or more. So copy what works and apply it district-wide.
Next, we can work with the City of Long Beach Environmental Services Bureau to put that plan in place.
We can provide custodial carts with two compartments for waste and recycling. You want to get these carts because oftentimes recycling gets thrown away and the purple bins are too difficult to carry around.
Also, we can provide custodial teacher and staff training with the benefits of waste reduction and proper recycling.
And lastly, we can work with the Cafeterias district-wide to donate and compost kitchen food. Thank you.
I'm Olivia Lopez.
And I'm Celeste Moya.
And this is why we should do this. The amount of school waste that can be recycled estimated by the Long Beach Environmental Services Department to be as much as sixty percent. Based on last year's cost for district waste, a district-wide waste reduction program could save over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more a year, not including the a hundred thousand dollars or more in cost of trash bags.
It is also required by the law and the right thing to do for our community and environment as a whole.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Annika Karikas. I'm the Vice President of Rogers Middle School Green Team. In two thousand and seventeen, Rogers earned the California Green Ribbon on the gold level and we were honored by the Long Beach Mayor and City Council. We rescued one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six pounds of shared food for Foodfinders in two thousand and eighteen, which saved three thousand three hundred and forty pounds of carbon dioxide or enough electricity for one hundred and thirty-five days for one household. Recently, we sent out a survey to see which schools had green activities and as of March twenty-sixth, only thirty-five out of those eighty-four schools have responded to our survey. Out of those thirty-five schools, only half of those schools have sorting stations, which means that the other half of those schools are not diverting their waste. Sixteen schools collect and sort cans and bottles and five schools collect recycling from their community. And then there's a link to the survey results. So these are one of the two questions on the survey. So seventy-four percent of schools wanted to help for improving sustainability and nine schools have sorting stations with no one working at them. Thirteen schools have sorting stations with students working at them and the other thirteen schools don't have sorting stations at all.
Okay, hi, my name is Penny Riddich and I'm a team leader. And this is our proposed sustainability plan. Our first part of our plan is to have academic support for all students. This is from the NGSS Connections from Next Generation Science Standards. Some of these include human impacts on Earth systems and Earth and human activity from the consumption of natural resources impact on Earth. There is also additional standards for elementary and high schools and we would like the district to have systematic sorting instructions to all school. And right now, in science class, I'm learning about climate change and how it affects the planet. And recently, I went to Pally Outdoor School and we learned even more about the environment. So we hope that each student can have an opportunity like this. And we also would like a green team or elective at every school. And we would also like an elective class code. Right now at Rogers, it is called social responsibility. And at Hughes, forensic science, and we would like to educate people about waste production, the environment, and its impact to future generations. And we would like station workers at the stations to help sort and we will move the purple bins to the streets and receive them for the Green Team.
Hello, my name is Harper Hogan and another component to our plan is easy sorting at every school. We want schools to contact Grades of Green for simplified training and sorting at every school. Grades of Green saves thousands of dollars and helped our school reduce ninety percent of lunch waste and fifty-five percent of overall campus waste. We also need students to communicate with their families about reducing single-use items in lunches, which is important for sustained reduction. Our sorting stations have purple bins for recyclables, blue bins for cans and bottles, and share bins for unopened food that goes to Foodfinders. We would also, we also want schools to have cans and bottles bins which are free from CRNR. And with CRNR, we make... And with CRNR, we make $800 every six months. The only thing, and the only thing the schools need to provide are clear bags for sorting. Our Green Team collects and sorts the recycling once a week.
Hi, I'm Zoe Christensen, and a big part of our plan is to have purple bins or cardboard dumpsters at every school. Our city, Long Beach, will provide multiple purple bins for free. And that helps because 78% of all schools' waste is recyclable. Cardboard bins will also help to divert waste, and this process reduces tipping fees significantly and will save the district thousands of dollars. Another part of our plan is to have a recycling aid at every school. Our aid assists with purple bins, sorting stations, and other Green Team activities, like making sure our stations are ready before we work. It is important to have consistent help on campus. Maybe recreational aids can help with recycling, too.
Hi, I'm Vivian Hall. I'm the President of Rogers Green Team, and we also want district nutrition and cafeteria support. We want Food Finders in all schools as a policy, and we want to limit the plastic packaging on things, like a pump system instead of condom and packets, sporks without wrappers, and removal of vending machines. Most of all, the trash I see fly by me at lunch is usually from the cafeteria and from vending machines. We also want custodial changes. Right now at our school, we only have a section for trash. And when the custodian goes around each class to collect recycling as well, there's no place to sort it. And while with adding a recycling bin, this will cut our waste in half, which also contributes to less tipping fees. So, thank you guys for listening. We know our plan will lead to substantial and immediate savings, but to do this, we need district support and organization. We also need an employee to organize and support schools, and these systematic changes will help when volunteers and students promote, like people working at lunch. With this happening at all schools, students will always know what to do when they go to middle school or high school.
So, thank you all very much. If we could have all the teams come up here, but we are asking for your participation as the Board and Executive Staff, Superintendent. We would like to know who wants to meet with. Maybe not all these children, but maybe just the adults. All right, awesome. Look at all these hands. Awesome. Thank you all so much. We appreciate it. Okay, are we getting a photo? So, we'd like to have, we'd like to have all three teams head up here and either have a seat or kneel down up here, and then we'll take the picture from this direction.
Look at our superintendent being a photographer instead of being in the picture.
Twitter, say Twitter.
Well done, well done. I know. High five, are we high-fiving? I don't know. You guys are really good. We'll work something out. Yeah, good job, everybody. Yeah, careful. Nice job. Really good presentation. Everybody obviously worked hard on that. It's impressive. Absolutely. It's really our pleasure. Yes, great job. Okay.
You better hurry because they're out the door.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone.
Yeah, I think they're-
Hello, hello. Hello.
They're saying goodbye.
Just wanted to just make a quick comment about your presentation. To see all of you so engaged at this early age into conservation efforts is really overwhelming and says a lot about our future, particularly as we look at the changing conditions of our world. To know that we've got young folks who are so dedicated to making sure that we improve on things is very heartwarming, and we really want to thank each and every one of you for what you're doing and your commitment to sustaining this planet. Thank you all very much.
Madam President, if I could just add three quick things, and it's okay if they're trickling out.
I think they are.
First is, I want my first-grade daughter to grow up to be an environmental advocate like we had here today. I think if anyone that was here listening to this and anyone's watching at home, if you want to take some tips on how you come make a board presentation and make recommendations, you saw it right there. And then lastly, Mr. Superintendent, I would ask if we could, you know, put this in a future board agenda to look into developing a waste reduction plan once you get a chance to meet and-
We'll set up a committee and then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great.
If I may add, too, let's not miss the fact that we have a crescendo of young people who believe in science in a nation where many of our leaders decry the world of science.
Okay, and with that, we'll move on. So, public testimony on items listed on the agenda. We have one request. Mr. Hubbard? Miss, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure. Somebody's going to have to help me out with the first name because... Well, I'll have the speaker help with the name.
Good afternoon, Board of Education. My name is Dejana Hubbard, just like Rio. I am one of the employees affected by the abolishment of positions in the Head Start program due to the lack of funding. You have heard from the Head Start administrative staff, but I am the face of the classified staff that will be affected. Here are some thoughts to ponder. First and foremost, I am a product of the Head Start program. I'm overly qualified for my position, but more importantly, I am a product of the Long Beach Unified School District because I'm a Long Beach Poly graduate. I've stayed in my position for years because I believe in the services that we provide to our least and our most economically disadvantaged families and students. And when, if we are approved for the grant, my two questions are: the positions that have been abolished, will those positions be rescinded? And number two, if those positions are rescinded, the employees that you have currently in the Head Start program, will they have to recompete with outside individuals? Or will they just be presented their positions back, as well as the employees that we know that are gone due to the reduced funding? Just to consider, I know that we're moving towards EduCare, but there still is quality and product in the Head Start program because Head Start looks at the strengths and needs of all of our families. And from another percentage, they don't do that. So, as we move forward, please, just when you speak with administrative staff, think about how it would affect the people in the city of Long Beach that are economically disadvantaged that most people don't understand because they come from places of trauma with dysfunctional activities that we, as most of us, have probably been blessed to understand. We have homes to go to, but we're looking at the homeless capacity and everything else that our city is dealing with as we move to the next generation. Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you. So, there were a couple of questions in there. Mr. Superintendent, there were a couple of questions in there about-
Yes, so, first of all, the Head Start grant. As of right now, we do not know if we have it. That's why all those positions are there. And the Head Start program, if we are to be funded, will be different next year because the Head Start program is requiring all-day programs, and we're servicing, where we're adding seats are the younger program. So, not all positions will come back because there will be fewer positions to be served, to be very honest with you. But we won't know for another six weeks, and there's a process we go through with classified personnel as well as certificated personnel and bringing individuals back, so.
Okay, thank you. Staff report, we have none. Public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. We have quite a stack, so I will remind everybody that it's a three-minute limit, and please adhere to that. Our first speaker is Wendy Garcia.
Good evening, Long Beach Board of Education and Superintendent Steinhauser. We are from Long Beach Jordan High School, and we are part of the Sex Sed Heal Zone Project for our Aspiration in Medical Sciences Program, also known as Ames Academy. We believe it is necessary to distribute and have condoms available in our biology classes and the wellness center and also the nurses' office without question. One of the many reasons we believe it is necessary to have the contraceptive available and how it would benefit students is that it would help protect our community health for the future. Many STDs can create problems with the human well-being, and certain diseases can even affect the internal organs. For example, if a student contacts syphilis and does not get it treated in time, it can cause cardiac, neural, and internal organ problems. Based on the research, we have discovered the more than 70% of high school sexual active students are prohibited from receiving condoms. Given the research that we found, each day, more than 25,000 American youth receive an SCI and more than 2,000 become pregnant, and in addition, as many as 55% of the previous number contact HIV. In Long Beach alone, we have the second highest rate of chlamydia and gonorrhea. Chlamydia rates have risen in Long Beach area about 88% since 2013. From the 2017 research, HIV and AIDS have shot up by 12% to 14%. As of 2017 in Long Beach, there has been 4,321 cases of chlamydia reported and 1,690 cases of gonorrhea reported. But keep in mind, there are still cases unreported, which means there could be a higher rate of chlamydia and gonorrhea. This is why we believe it is important for high schools to provide condoms to students. It'll lower the percentage of chlamydia and gonorrhea, and it'll lower the teen pregnancy rate. And there's always a case in which students do not feel safe enough to talk about these things with parents or others, so we want to make sure that school is a safe place. They can come to protect themselves without question. Our intent is to revise health education curriculum for sex education to include valuable resources high school students need to have access to on our high school campuses. We really hope you take our proposal into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Students would like to request an audience with you in order to discuss this matter further. If you'd like to reach out, please let us know. Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Maribel Nunez.
Hello again. We meet again from Green Team. I just, I'm coming here introducing myself also as a student from Cal State Long Beach, and I'm also a Keller teacher, a science teacher at Keller Middle School. My team and I are here today because we all aspire to become dual-language teachers that can contribute to this wonderful program that we have going on here at Long Beach Unified. We'd also like this opportunity to share some of our research findings from our project on DI schools in the Long Beach Unified School District. There are five elementary DI schools across the district, and Keller is the only DI middle school. Since Keller opened, enrollment has grown every year, and the trend is projected to continue. In addition, a large percentage of students have shown interest in continuing their dual-language education at the high school level. Just last year, 90% of Keller eighth graders took the AP Spanish Language exam and 90% passed it. And 50% of those who passed got a four or five. However, there isn't a standard process or plan for the placement of these students after eighth grade, so they can continue to advance in dual-language. When our students go to high school, most are placed in the Spanish for Spanish speakers seven, eight course, which is roughly two years below the level, the level they should be taking. In other words, they are required to repeat two years' worth of content in ninth and 10th grade that they already covered in middle school. This doesn't make any sense. For instance, if a student takes algebra in eighth grade with a passing grade, they wouldn't be asked to repeat the same course in high school. Instead, they would be moved on to the next level, the next-level math course. So, why is this continuum not followed for the language curriculum? Especially when they have already demonstrated that they have the skills by passing the final AP exam. Keller students should be able to advance in their language curriculum, just as they're able to do in their math courses. So, when headed to high school, why not start them off with a Spanish literature class? Why not explore options to connect with the community, internships, or city colleges to continue language courses at their advanced levels? More needs to be offered to them. There needs to be an alternative, especially when we think about all the money that is invested into getting materials, the right teachers, training, and certifications. Kids, parents, and teachers have invested so much of their own time, effort, and money into the 13-year DI program, only to then have students bummed back in high school and repeat two years of curriculum just because there are no alternatives in place. How does that make any sense? I propose that as a district, we come up with a better plan for DI students transitioning to high school. We welcome to the start of a conversation to determine and plan proper placement to enable student, to enable continued growth and advancement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker, Jerica Jenkins.
Hi, good evening, Superintendent Steinhauser, Madam President, board members, and staff. As a former student and graduate of Long Beach Unified School District, Go Lancers, I can personally attest to the amount of dedication and hard work that teachers, school administrators, and staff invest into creating programs that support the success of their over 70,000 students. It comes as no surprise that year after year, Long Beach Unified continues to be recognized for its excellence and innovation. One needn't look any further than your dual immersion program. Despite previous discourse of the detriments of bilingual education, Long Beach Unified's dual immersion programs continue to provide evidence in the contrary. Not only are our, excuse me, are our students succeeding in two languages, they are thriving. At both the elementary and middle school level, dual immersion students are exceeding district and state academic achievement levels in the English Language Arts and Math. As part of my research, I decided to focus on the role of assessment in dual-language immersion. Specifically, I focus on measuring academic language proficiency in Spanish. Popular research emphasizes the role of assessments. They serve as a measure and demonstration of what students have or have not learned in given content areas. Considering that students come from varied linguistic and educational backgrounds, assessing academic progress in both English Language Arts and Spanish Language Arts is essential. I believe that this will further student proficiency in both target languages while serving as a base from which strong academic language can develop. Furthermore, cross-referencing data from both languages can provide a more meaningful, holistic view of student progress. Yet, in my research, I wasn't able to find information on the district's current practices concerning standardized, excuse me, Spanish language assessments outside of advanced placement exams. However, there are several standardized examinations that focus on English language proficiency, such as CASP and SBAK. Without a proficiency assessment in Spanish, how do teachers really know how their students are doing? It is my hope today that the district can take this matter into consideration, while continuing their support, excuse me, continuing to support the success of our dual immersion students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Dulcinea.
Good evening, my name is Dulcinea Lua, and I am a credential student at Cal State Long Beach, obtaining a bilingual authorization in Spanish. I am currently taking a course in Latino education in the United States. I have done some basic research on Proposition 58, English proficiency and multilingual education. The purpose of this research is to contribute to the knowledge and understanding of how dual-language immersion programs are being implemented and designed. Proposition 58 authorizes school districts to establish dual-immersion programs and integrate students from diverse backgrounds. Big Spie Elementary School just opened, and more than one hundred families applied, and only sixty students got spots in the program. This brings to mind how students are being selected. Are students properly being selected to establish dual-language immersion programs for both native and non-native English speakers? Research shows that language acquisition is more successful when it begins at an early age. However, there's not enough schools in the district that offer dual-language and multicultural education programs to meet the current demand. Today, we live in a multicultural society, and we're competing globally. Every student deserves the opportunity to become bilingual. In addition, this will satisfy the increasing demand for the program, and it will allow all students to have the opportunity to become bilingual. Thank you.
Thank you. Alma.
Hello, I am Alma Vanessa Cunha, I'm also a current student at CSULB. Part of my research, I have looked into the curriculum resources provided to dual-American schools. So, I have looked, and I saw that dual-immersion schools use Common Core in Espanol in the next-generation science standards. Common Core was adopted in 2010 by California, and NGSS was adopted in 2013. After looking at the LBQUSD K-12 Core Content Textbook list for 2018 through 2019, I noticed some of the text, the publication dates for some of the textbooks. For Reading Language Arts, I noticed that for K-5, the date is 2017. For Math, for K-8, the date of publication is 2017. I noticed that these textbooks are actually published after the Common Core and NGSS were adopted by California. Upon further research, I continued looking, and I saw that for History, Social Studies, and for Science, the textbooks were published before Common Core and NGSS. For History, Social Studies, for K-5, I noticed it was, the year was 2007, 2008, and for 6 through 8, it was around the same time, 2007, 2008. For Science, I saw that for K-5, it was 2008, and for 6 through 8, it was 2007. So, my question to the district tonight is, how are we gonna, how are you, or how are we, as a district, I'm trying to be a teacher, so I also want to know what we can do to help students. How can we provide the textbooks for History, Social Studies, and for Science that are actually going to follow Common Core and NGSS standards, and not the previous standards that were published in 1998? And also, is a teacher from each dual-immersion school going to be in the textbook adoption committee? Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Valeska.
Good evening, my name is Valeska Roman, and I'm a graduate student at Cal State Long Beach. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you tonight on the important topic of dual immersion. As part of our Chicano Studies Research Class, we have done basic research in conducting interviews, in which they have provided information regarding dual-immersion students entering high school, not being able to express themselves in vernacular and academic Spanish. This basic research suggests that dual-immersion programs that support the students' bicultural identities, and not just their bicultural vocabulary, will be the most successful, increasing their engagements with the program. To that end, we would like to suggest that the school board review the opportunities to increase the degree to which of its dual-immersion educational program access students' bicultural identities. Given the political situation in our nation today, opportunities to debate current events of importance of students in Spanish will be one important way to address the access their bicultural identities. One method of doing so will be to conduct debates in Spanish. This helps the students not only articulate themselves using Spanish academic language, but also to gain confidence, and learning how to express themselves on topics pressing concerns to them. We are also aware that the district has already implemented performing art programs in several of their schools. However, if these programs can extend to include more drama, music, poetry, compositions, and recitation activities, in which are also proven ways to increase students' engagements, these programs will help students' expressions of their culture. We encourage you to consider increasing the role of performance art in the dual-immersion classrooms. In programs where teachers struggle with students' expressions, we feel that an emphasis on performance art and establishing debate Spanish teams, art will be an effective remedy to this commonly expressed problem. We believe these simple steps like these can enhance the value students see in dual-immersion programs, especially at the secondary school level. I hope you can address our questions and concerns that me and my group are very interested in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angie.
I think this is the hardest spot to be in. It's a lot easier to address third graders. My name is Angie Pluma, good evening, Board members. I'm a seventeenth-year teacher for the Los Angeles Unified School District, and in continuing my development as a teacher, I too am taking courses that can help educate me and my profession. I think it's crucial that we continue to staff the appropriate teachers in this type of dual-language position, and keeping in consideration all the needs that the professional needs to teach that position. So, I'm standing here more on behalf of the teacher, and irrelevant of the district that I work for, we're all in the service of servicing students. So, making sure that we have qualified teachers that are strong, not just with credentialing, but with the command of the language that they're teaching, professional development that keeps them up to date with the demands of the program, to teach it effectively, making sure that incentive pay becomes part of the program, so that teachers stay in the program, stay committed to it, and are given the pay for the extra work. I've been on both sides of the spectrum, being in a structured English immersion classroom, and in a dual-language classroom, and you are servicing a lot more students, translating work, creating resources that sometimes aren't available. The appropriate resources obviously continue to be a factor. I don't think it's just LA Unified, I think it's in all districts, as the program continues to grow. More importantly, I think just keeping cognizant of the fact that the program is truly beneficial, and I think everyone has buying into the program, the benefits of bilingualism and biliteracy is huge, especially in this competitive world, but making sure that not only the students are appropriate into the program, but teachers as well, and making sure that all the benefits, as well as the professional development and the resources are in place for the teacher and the student, is crucial to the success of the program. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, I know that we've had, I know that we've had several conversations about the status of our DI programs. It looks like Dr. Moreno's students are doing some interesting research. When can we expect an update on our DI programming?
We can give you an update at the next board meeting and clarify some things that were said, so no problem.
That was great.
The next speaker will be Jason.
Good evening, Board, good evening, Superintendent. I'd like to ask the audience participation, just for just a quick second, bear with me, because I only have three minutes. If everybody could stand up really quick, I greatly appreciate it. Okay, so, I don't know what your guys' email address for the board is, I haven't looked yet, but do me a favor, sit down if you do not want Google to have your social security number. Come on, did you know that Google Drive is what this district is using to share documents with all the students? Do you know what the login is? It's a social security number for all the students. Do you know what the password is? Do you know what the password is? Date of birth. Do you know how the district distributes the username and password for these websites? They print out a piece of paper, and they hand them out to all the students. Do you know how I found out? I was at school. I pounded a piece of paper on the ground. It was Ashley Aguayo. Her social security number is two zero one, 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 eight, six. I can't do the rest, because it's illegal. The problem with that is, anytime you include Strata with a social security number, it's a federal offense, so I can't finish it. I went into my son's account while he was doing homework on Google Classroom. When you hover over email addresses, it shows their social security number. So, I have all the social security numbers for all the children in my students' class. But, my kid can go to school and go, hey, my birthday's coming up. When's your birthday? Now, I have their social security number and their birth date. I can go to their parents, hey, we're doing a little fundraiser thing at the, on the, at the Friday donut thing, you want to be there? What's your last name? Oh, wait a minute, some of them are divorced, and now I have a maiden name. I have all the security features for every credit card company, every financial institution, the DMV, everything. So, my issue is, not that the kids in my kids' classes, but the district has approximately seventy-two thousand, two hundred students. That's a hundred and forty-four thousand parents that have access to social security numbers and birth dates to children. Now, I have great moral turpitude. I would never submit for any illicit activity based on somebody else's security number. There's no way that you can guarantee me that those other hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight parents wouldn't be as well off. So, take some time, talk to your kids, let them know the criticality of what their social security number is. Let them know that they should not ever share their birth date with anyone under any circumstances. Please, we've got to do something to get rid of social security numbers on student ID numbers. State of Arizona got off of driver's license in 1986. I couldn't find when California did it, but you can't get your social security number on your license. No health insurance company puts social security information on their health insurance card. My driver's license doesn't have it, my passport doesn't have it, my real ID doesn't have it, TWIC cards don't have it. I'd love to talk more, I'll be back for the next meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, I saw you taking notes. Okay, our next speaker will be Ahmed Demini.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us. I came last month, and I pleaded with the board, and with Mr. Steinhauser, to try to accommodate our need to where my children go to the same school, one that is a quarter-mile away from our house, as opposed to a mile and a half. And I had mentioned that Zachary will go to the school that's a quarter-mile away, yet his sister, that's six-years-old, is going to go to the one that's one mile and a half away, cross, going under the 405 freeway, passing both the entrance and the exit to the 405 at Atlantic, and I forgot to mention that she will have to cross the railroad track. Six-year-old crossing a railroad track, going to some deserted areas of Long Beach that are not too, you know, secure and safe. So, I would appreciate, I mean, I haven't heard from anyone, although Mr. Steinhauser was taking some notes, I would appreciate if some action was to happen, especially the time is going by fast, and we want to know a decision, because a lot is based on whether the school is going to accommodate us or not.
Thank you.
And since, I mean, there was some interesting comments by some people, I just want to say, I speak, I happen to speak Arabic, Moroccan French, Spanish, and English. I appreciated them trying to advocate for a second education, although I support such things. So, hey, I would like to include Arabic in that dual-culturism, too, especially, especially, thank you so much, especially, I thought of certain words that we use every day, not even knowing them, that are Arabic, alcohol, algorithm, algebra, hazard, admiral, adobe, albatross, alcove, and hazard, maybe another two hundred or three hundred words. So, and to the young ladies that says something about, my mom had me when she was seventeen years old, it was a struggle. School is not for sex advocacy, school is for education. I would allocate the money to the condoms for educating abstinence. J. Leno had memorized it beautifully, when he says that his grandma used to advocate the ring before the thing. If we can allocate that money to sex education, that prevents people from thinking about, you know, getting intimate when they're going to school, school is not for intimacy or such education, school is for education, and that's my opinion on that, as a father of three children, and I thank you for having us over here.
Thank you. Okay, business items, personnel, Dr. Williams.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have the personnel report prepared by Deputy Superintendent of Education Services Ruth Ashley, and approved by our Superintendent Chris Steinhauser. I will read the classified portion of the report first, followed by the certificated portion. There were sixty-eight appointments, thirteen leaves of absence, two abandonment of positions, one separation, fourteen resignations, five retirements, eighteen reductions, lack of work, lack of funds, abolishments, we modified that number, lack of work, lack of funds, from one forty-nine to one forty-seven. Rescissions, there was one rescission. On the certificated side, there were fifty-three appointments, fifty in-service changes, eight leaves of absence, four release of temporary contract employees, eight resignations, seventeen retirements, and I move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Instruction?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Finance report A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Finance report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Business Department report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Purchasing and Contract Report A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Purchasing and Contract Report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Superintendent items.
Madam President, and members of the Board, on behalf of the Superintendent, I'm recommending expulsion of the following students, there are three, and I'll take them individually. The first student is student number seven, four, three, four. The student listed, or the student named, would be expelled under Education Code 48915A, and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until after the end of the fall semester 2019, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero.
Thank you, second student, student number five, seven, zero, two. The student named would be expelled under Education Code 48915C, and would not be eligible to reapply, to apply for readmission until after the end of the fall semester. However, Student Placement Services has made the recommendation that this student be expelled with a consideration for a suspended expulsion, with an opportunity to attend the Guidance Opportunity Class at Marshall Academy of the Arts.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero.
And student number one, seven, zero, two, the student named would be expelled under Education Code 48915A, and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until after the end of the fall semester 2019, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four-zero. Okay, unfinished business, we have none. We have none. New business, uh, two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty schedule of Board Educate, Board of Education meetings and workshops?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
Uh, I would just add the revision by the superintendent made to the dates.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Adoption of K twelve and CDC Head Start tentative agreements. Teachers Association of Long Beach, uh, yep.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Compensation for management and nonrepresented employees.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Board policy four, one, one, two, uh, two certification.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, uh, Dr. Baker. Could you clarify, uh, the changes from, um, uh, No Child Left Behind and how this isn't a revision, revision of that?
Ms. Saki, do you want to come address the question? Thank you.
Yes, the previous policy referenced the federal requirements in No Child Left Behind. We are now under state requirements, they are equally rigorous. Um, in addition to this policy also is the recognition that the district provides an induction program, which is the process by which our teachers clear their credential, and that is actually provided for them free of charge. There's also a mention of the National Board, um, certification process that the district supports as well.
Thanks.
Um, I, I believe it also provides for waivers in certain instances.
There is legislation that the state has set forward for our process, if we need a teacher, um, we need to staff a teacher for a waiver. But that is not ours, that is according to Education Code.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Uh, board policy five, one, one, seven, interdistrict, interdistrict attendance.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just, so just to clarify, this just, um, updates our guidelines to, um, approve interdistrict transfers, right?
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Resolution zero, three, two, seven, one, nine, dash, A, considering agreement for Energy Conservation Services with Long Beach Unified School District Solar Fund LLC pursuant to Government Code Section four, two, one, seven, point, one, O, dash, one, eight, making certain findings required for approval of Energy Conservation Services Agreement.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Resolution zero, three, two, seven, one, nine, dash, B, giving notice of intent to dedicate easements to the City of Long Beach at Milliken High School for building one thousand double-check detector valve purposes.
Move approval. Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. Resolution zero, three, two, seven, one, nine, dash, C, authorizing entering into a funding agreement with the State Water Resources Control Board and authorizing and designating a representative for the modernization projects.
Move approval. Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes four zero. And now we're at the part where we do board reports. Kyle, welcome again, we, uh, look forward to hearing from you and what's happening at CAMHS.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, friends and family of the Long Beach Unified School District, I'm Kyle Masukawa, I am the current ASB president at the California Academy of Mathematics and Science, and I'm humbled to be here once again and excited to share what's happening at CAMHS. Since August, CAMHS has held its various dress-up days throughout the holiday season, which faculty and students participated in. We have those photos up on our school page, if you want to check them out. Uh, we've had our annual dance show, Bring in the Beat, which showcases the amazing dancers and the variety of dances from Bollywood, Afro beats, contemporary, and hip-hop. We, we have also implemented a weekly trivia which honors Awareness Months and the influential people of those months, including Black History Month and Women's History Month. Uh, it's played over the intercom and students have the opportunity to win gift cards. Uh, with the activities going on in the second semester, our school has begun preparing for the AP season by opening the Calculus Cafe, an environment where students have access to help by tutors and Khan Academy. In addition, those who participate in the Khan Academy at the Cafe have an opportunity to win an iPad, AirPods, and gift cards. Uh, some recent accomplishments by the students has been FRCs, the First Robotics Competition, uh, qualification for the Worlds, the VEX Robotics Qualification for State and National Championships, as well as the senior classes five hundred forty-five college acceptancees count, five acceptance, uh, which is still in counting. Some of the notable schools include Caltech, MIT, Johns Hopkins, Brown, Cornell, Berkeley, Olin, and Northeast, Northwestern to list a few. And we also have a student who received the Edison Scholarship. And then from the various APs to the college decisions ahead, CAMHS students are working hard to achieve excellence, and of course, after spring break, which is next week. Thank you. Thank you.
Very nice, um, do you have an update on your plans for next year?
Um, well, college is definitely in view, I got accepted to Chapman and USF, and tomorrow I'm waiting for NYU. Yeah, so exciting.
That is exciting. Very good, well, we are very proud of you.
Thank you.
What programs are you looking at?
Uh, well, I'm interested in dermatology, so a lot of health science, biology, Chapman, I'm doing health sciences, and USF and NYU, uh, biology.
Very cool.
Well, that's impressive.
So let's send good vibes for tomorrow, right? For good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to start with you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last board meeting, I neglected to report on, on, on the activity at Read Across America at Bernie, and I want to thank the principal, Lou Anna Wesley, and her staff for providing really an enjoyable day for all of us. I'm really not sure who enjoyed that more, me or the students. I had a really a wonderful time, uh, read a story about the dragon who was transformed into a prince. And before I can get halfway through the story, they were already discovering the plot by saying that that dragon is going to turn into a prince. Now, I asked them, have they read the story before, and they said, no, we're just very perceptive, Dr. Williams. But a good group, we had a great, great time that day, and we all got a chance to, to take pictures together. Just recently, uh, attended a concert involving our Harmony Project at, uh, the Long Beach Poly High School. And it was amazing performance by the kids, and it was absolutely packed, that entire auditorium. There were four performances that were done by each, uh, level, and I'm describing them as levels. First year, students who were current, all the way up to students who had been in the program for four years. And they perform admirably at all levels. The first, the, the, the new students performed Bach, a, a project by Bach. The second year students performed the program by Mozart. The third year by Beethoven, and this one I have a heck of a time for announcing, Tuskowski?
Cherkowski.
Tuskowski, okay. Then, they all came together for a final, and it was amazing performance. I was reminded by Margaret, the lady who first introduced this project to us, that I had challenged her on the assumption that kids who were involved in music and some of the other, uh, schools where she started this program, saw a dramatic change in their grades, attitudes, and all of this. Now, these kids have to come in on a Saturday pretty much in practice, and to see that level of continuity in this program was pretty impressive. She asked me again after the performance, what did I think? I had to admit that she was right, I was wrong. This program is making remarkable difference in all of our kids. So, uh, kudos to the Harmony Program and all of our folks, um, our music director, who was there to help coordinate it, all the volunteers and all the folks who are part of that, that amazing performance. And as I mentioned before, the auditorium was packed to the, to the, to the limit. But again, it was an amazing performance by our kids, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Uh, Dr. Benitez?
Just a couple of items to report on, uh, Madam President. Uh, I wanted just to share my appreciation for everyone that gave a presentation at our two-day board, uh, workshop. I always, uh, I'm amazed by all of the, the scope and the breadth of all of the work that our district is doing in partnership with many of our community organizations. So thank you to everyone that participated, um, in our last two days, uh, here. Uh, I also wanted to share that I had a chance to visit, um, our Male Student Academy at Franklin a couple of weeks ago, and just wanted to give, uh, props to, uh, our Male Student Academy, uh, staff, um, that's, you know, doing wonderful work with our young, uh, men of color in the district. So, if anyone is not familiar with the, the great program, uh, you know, I'd ask you to check that out, and our female academies, uh, as well. And then, um, last thing is, um, we had an LCAP, uh, presentation yesterday, uh, President Craighead, Board Member Kerr, and I had an, uh, opportunity to participate in the last forum. I would just encourage our community members, students, uh, and parents to be on the lookout for upcoming LCAP, uh, forums, these are local control accountability plans, uh, that make sure that our district, um, does right by our LCFF, uh, funding, and so we have many opportunities for our community members to participate and give input and recommendations that help then guide, uh, the decisions of the board and how we implement, uh, our, our funding, uh, stream. So, uh, my appreciation to everyone that helped put that LCAP forum, uh, on, and everyone that came out and participated, uh, in that, and that's all I have, I'm sure.
Thank you, that's, that's good. Okay, Mr. Meyer?
I'll save my report, thanks.
Okay, well then I'll try and make mine quick. I know we've had, um, a couple of long days and, uh, a lot of wonderful information, but I do want to highlight some people, and, um, I thought I saw Cindy Bader, Bader here earlier, maybe that was this morning, I don't remember, but, um, I was invited to participate with the SIM Lab, and, um, this is an activity for our kids involved in, uh, medical pathways at, um, Lakewood Poly and Sato, and this happens in collaboration with, um, uh, Long Beach Memorial Hospital, and, uh, we have a Lakewood teacher, Mr. Aaron Volkoff, who, um, volunteers to be a patient, and, and can I just say that, um, he really has no limits as to what he will do for these students, for their, um, education. He poses as a homeless person who's been brought to the emergency room, and, uh, with technology being what it is, they actually have a thing that comes out of a package that creates a smell that, um, yeah, I don't think I have to say more about that, but anyhow, he, he does that so that he can, um, train students in, um, what to, uh, look for when you're interviewing somebody who's been brought in, you know, at, and it's more than just what medications they've taken, but really, um, that, that full experience, so, uh, thank you to Mr. Volkoff, because I, I don't know how many teachers would do that, but he does a great job with it. Um, also, um, at Cabrillo, fabulous things are happening, all, happening always, and there's a teacher, um, Mrs. Lasco, and she, for the past five years, has been taking a group of students to visit Caltech in Pasadena, and she takes kids that maybe wouldn't otherwise, otherwise have the opportunity to, you know, visit campuses like that, and, um, this year, there is a Cabrillo student who was awarded a four hundred thousand dollar scholarship to Caltech from Cabrillo, and probably one of the, um, that's Angel, um, uh, Angel Menendez, so I hope that's okay if I congratulate him publicly, but, um, he has had challenges, including being a homeless student. So, for him to work so hard and to be paired with teachers like Mrs. Lasco, who goes out of her way, um, to support students, this is what can happen, is, he now not only has aspirations of attending, uh, a fabulous, you know, institution, but he's going there, and he's got a, a scholarship, so he's on his way, I, I'm sure his future is very bright. I was able to meet him, interestingly enough, at a Women in STEM luncheon, and I, um, would like to thank, uh, Mr. Fisher, who with his team creates this whole luncheon for the, um, students. It's, it's mostly the, uh, female students, but also the, um, there are male students that serve the lunch and, um, and wait on everybody, and they have not just community partners, but other people that, um, come in and contribute to that. And then finally, I attended the, um, wheelchair soccer featuring the Flying Tigers, that was very exciting. This is a sporting activity not to be missed, we have the, um, wingmen who, uh, maneuver the wheelchairs, and all the wheelchairs are outfitted with, um, I think it's plastic, but it reminds me of like a cow catcher on a train, um, if I can be a little old-timey like that. And so the wingmen maneuver the wheelchairs, the soccer ball is a little bit bigger, and, um, this was so inclusive, it wasn't just the kids participating as the athletes, but, uh, this involves our program at, at Tucker, the, um, ACT, is it, um, oh, Tiffany, help me out, uh, community, adult community?
Transition.
Transition, okay. We always have so many acronyms, and honestly, um, thank you, Tiffany. So, our adult, darn it.
Community.
Community, yeah, boy, okay, um, it's been a long day, sorry. Um, we had, uh, students participate, and that's our eighteen to twenty-two, those are our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds, they participate as the cheerleaders, they're the athletes, they're in the audience, we had family members there, staff members, it was, uh, a great event. So, that's all for me, how about, uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, and I want to also, uh, thank everyone who presented over the last two days, um, it's always great information, so folks who watch this meeting on TV also watch the board workshops on TV, great, great education. Um, and just a, a note of, uh, information, so, um, because we live in this great country, our, um, uh, freedom of speech is, um, uh, the backbone of our democracy, so individuals can come to public meetings and say things that may or may not be true. And so, and because we cannot speak to items that are not agendized, um, you know, people wonder about that sometimes. However, under Superintendent's report, I am going to ask Dr. Lund to come up and speak about some information that was presented in a, in our public testimony, so that, um, uh, we can clarify some things that were not accurate.
I'm assuming you're referring to the?
About the Google Doc, yes.
Yeah, social security numbers. We don't collect any social security numbers within the district for enrollment purposes or any other purposes, so as part of enrollments, that's not part of our enrollment process. Our Google IDs are based on our student ID, it is a nine-digit ID, uh, but it is not a social security number. The default password when students do set up that Google account is their birthday. Students are encouraged to change that password once they have that, once they've set up their account.
Also like to say, um, we take the security, uh, and the privacy at the utmost, and folks do a great job, um, and we always have to keep ahead of the game because there are hackers from all over the world, I don't know if you just saw, Facebook just took down twenty-eight hundred accounts, two thousand from Russia, and about eight hundred from Iran. So, so there are always people out there who are bright, who are trying to beat the system, but we have people here who are trying to beat them. So, your accounts are safe, uh, you, hopefully we accepted NYU, so, um, and that's why we do it, so you can go where you want, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that addition, it's unusual that we do something like that, but I think in this case it was, uh, critical. Okay, uh, are there any announcements?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple of-
Yes, I have a couple of announcements, but I do want to go back. There's one thing I neglected to report on, and I think this is very important. A while back, we developed a partnership with the College of Education at Cal State University of Long Beach to grow our own teachers, teachers of color, and based on an earlier report by Ruth Ashley and a number of teachers who were teaching in our primary grades, we saw a big gap, and I, of course, wanted to understand why we couldn't get those numbers up, and after further investigation, discovered that they were not applying for teaching positions in our colleges and universities. I even reached out to our people at the Council of the Great City Schools that represents seventy-four of the nation's largest school districts for their help, and the report came back that they were all over the country, these kids were not applying for teaching positions. So with Chris's help, we did develop a partnership with the College of Education at Cal State Long Beach. I serve on that committee. David Zaid's part of that group, and there are a number of other folks who are part of that group. We've met probably six times already. We've identified a strategy for recruiting teachers, looking initially at the initial cohort of two graduate students who are currently enrolled in teacher education, and recruiting three additional students as part of that cohort, who are currently students who have their bachelor's degrees. We have to raise money for that, and the initial budget is fifty thousand dollars. I have in front of me a letter from Parker and Covert LLP, who is one of the legal teams that represents our district, that just came today, and was addressed to David Zaid, response to request for participation in the Teacher for Urban Schools program. This correspondence is a response to your proposal inviting our firm to support the Teacher for Urban Schools program. The partners of Parker and Covert have received your proposal, and by unanimous consensus, our law firm accepts your invitation to actively participate in this program by providing funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars per year for five years. We want to thank you for giving our firm the opportunity to participate. Please provide additional information with regards to how the financial participation should be sent to the district. Very truly yours, Douglas Yaman and Steve Montanez. And want to really thank those folks for helping us get this project off the ground. That's one piece, and on Saturday, the Long Beach Unity Festival, a program we have worked with for a number of years, that really works with our students to bring these kids together in the area of the arts, music, and that kind of thing, will be having their annual event this Saturday at Cabrillo High School. And in my conversation with Steve and his wife Stephanie, who run this program, they have really engaged, again, this community to come out for this event. This program was started years ago because of an incident in, oh, I can't think of the area in the city, but it was an incident between African-American students and white students, and this program has tried to heal that divide all these years by having these kids come together every year, and they do have a mixed group of kids coming together in the arts and music. So that program is this Saturday, and on Sunday, I believe, the Cesar Chavez Celebration at Chavez Elementary School?
That's a good transition. Can I-
There you go.
Yeah, so from eleven to two this Saturday, I mean, Sunday, Sunday, sorry, the thirty-first, Chavez Elementary School is hosting a Cesar Chavez Day of Celebration, so if you're interested in coming out and participating and celebrating the contributions of one of our key civil rights leaders in this country, Cesar Chavez, come out and join us. I think the Superintendent, you'll be there, right, as well, and other district staff and school staff, and I think it's, I think we end on a good note with Cesar Chavez, one of our most widely known civil rights monikers, si se puede, right? So, yes, thank you, Dr. Williams, for the smooth transition there to the announcement.
You owe me one. And I just, I'm checking on this one, it's on my schedule, but is there a career fair at Cabrillo on eight to two?
April second.
April second, from nine to eleven.
Okay, any more announcements? How about a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Okay, thank you for being here, everyone.